I think it is truly important that we help out with rescue and recovery and rebuilding in New Orleans. I think it's important that we go there and learn from that experience. Equally important, though, I think we have to recognize that this hurricane is going to probably result in a huge swing in federal policy. I think things are going to change, and you can hear it in the news and you can hear it from various politicians. I think there's going to be a swing away from research and from planning and from mitigation related to terrorist threats toward natural hazards. And I think we in California need to be certain that as that takes place, the swing doesn't just go to hurricanes. Hurricanes are important, but we need to watch our own back, and we need to be sure that when the swing happens, we guide that swing so earthquakes aren't forgotten. It's not because we're greedy, it's because we're needy. We need to solve these problems in California. There are huge relief bills going through Congress. There's another $40 or $50 billion bill probably going to be signed today. I think it's great that that's happening, but I think that some small amount of money might be set aside for helping us understand how we prevent future disasters. And it can be a tiny, tiny, minuscule percentage of what's going on in these relief bills today. I think our California delegation needs advice on ways to move. I think they're looking to experts such as us in the universities in California to help. How can we help? Well, I think we need to send the message, starting today, to our California delegation. By the way, they're waiting to hear from us, I know. What should they be thinking about as new legislation is being considered, as new bills are being passed? What should they be thinking about? And if they're not hearing from us, and by the way, I think they're not yet, they're going to listen to what everybody else is doing, and we may be late already. So, sure, we should help out with the recovery activities and with rebuilding and so forth, but I think we also should have in mind something really grand. This is, I hate to say, but you know, these disasters always are also opportunities. And you know, this is a chance to get the message out to our legislators that we can make a difference through research, through thinking about planning and rebuilding, mitigation, and so forth. I think Berkeley ought to be thinking about taking the lead on developing some really grand centers, some really grand institute that deals with decision-making before, during, and after various types of hazards, and integrating engineering with sound planning, economics, risk management, and information technologies. I think it's probably bigger than something Berkeley can do alone, but we have the means and the skills to take the lead on it, and I think that's what we should talk about. Thanks.
Shankar, this is Alfred Merced.
Yeah. Let's get your slides up, one second.
Yeah, we're ready to go. We've got our faculty members settled in for class. I'm delighted to say that we actually have faculty going to class.
That's great. So we have your slides. Also, can you work the slides? We have your slides, Alberto.
Okay. So I'll tell you when to go ahead and pick your slides, okay?
Okay.
So, do you see that?
You see the first slide?
Perfect. I can see what you see, I think, so that's a good thing. So, you know, we have, the colleague here is John Newsman, that later on will talk about remote sensory image and how you can process sample operation of the data, but first, we just prepared a couple of slides to do some brainstorming regarding what we can do, at least from the computer science perspective. So we're going to be bringing some new ideas, but I think they are, Bob, just, you know, keep the nail in the head, because I think our idea exactly marks what he was saying at the very beginning. So if you move to the next slide, please. I'm going to be talking, my other expertise is in sensor networks, so I have a lot of experience working at UCLA with the sensor network and everything with Deborah Aitken and a bunch of people over there. We have collaboration with UC Merced, and we plan to continue that. My idea is to start a local group over here. Later on, Sean will talk a little bit more about image processing for remote sensor data. If we move to the next slide. So, what are the initial failures that I saw, at least in the news, that were, had an immediate impact over there? The main failures there were lack of communication infrastructure. Entire communication infrastructure was down, and people didn't even know what was going on, because they couldn't even communicate. No electronic communication was available, there were some satellite issues that the military or even some reports we were doing, they were manually bringing in there, and then they had gone uplink, and that's it. And I think that even from that perspective, there's fewer communication infrastructure, we currently have the technology to do that quite easily, and I'm going to show you some great examples of that. And so this goes related to what Bob Bia said, that, well, the first thing which is public is lack of infrastructure and how we rebuild. And we have some ideas on how to do that quite efficiently and relatively easily. And the other one is data gathering. We don't know exactly what's going on, and we have to gather data, environmental data, sensing data, and I think we, sensor networks have probably, probably a very nice opportunity to contribute to that. So, if we move to the next slide, please. So, one of the themes that we are now investigating sensor networks in general is this idea of fast deployment. We have some experiments and experiences deploying sensor networks that are long-lived. These are sensors where you deploy for several months or years, and this is continuously, but you gather very little data, because you want, there is a trade-off between lifetime and the amount of data you can process and handle and put it back to a central server to analyze. So, I'm going to be, I think that, we're going to be focusing more in rapid deployment sensor networks, which are sensor networks that you can deploy in a day, and you can gather data for just a day, and even one day worth of data is probably very useful for a lot of scientists, even if it's just one day, or up to 15 days, maybe a month, but no longer than that. So, they're going to be more energy-hungry, that's why essentially you're not going to be able to last too long, but at the very least, you're going to probably gather much more bandwidth-intensive data, and even going to be able to essentially build on the fly communication infrastructure. So, if we move to the next slide. So, this is an example of a class at UCLA. This is a class that I helped build also with my advisor. I always talk to Sense UCLA, because one week ago I was there, that's why. Sorry, I'm UC Merced, but I'm still kind of related to that. But hopefully we can, you know, replicate exactly what you have there over here. So, this is in Pond, this is a desert in the north part of Los Angeles, and you see a cluster of 25 senior undergrads, guided by five grad students, we have past some expertise in here, they were able to deploy a grid in Pond of roughly 25 nodes, covering an area of 25 miles by 20 miles, with a small hill in the middle, so, and it was a desert, and at the time they were deployed, there was a flood, the condition actually were, although much less rapid, relatively similar with a lot of debris and a lot of water. And I don't know if you can see there, there's a long pole, two directional antennas in 90-degree angles, sometimes you can do 180 degrees if you want to align, and the basic infrastructure that we abused was, if you see the picture in the middle, it's a PDA, in this case an ITAC, has Linux software, it has essentially an enclosure, it's essentially a box, so it can last, and even it can support rain, et cetera, and a single pole that you can buy in cold, equal cable, and they only extend your cell and induce the battery, which is like a big car battery. The main power consumption in this particular system is the antenna, because you want to have the links, at least five kilometers apart, and therefore that requires a minimum amount of power, and you cannot avoid it, it's a loss of energy. You want to transmit a signal over a certain, you know, distance, you need a minimum amount of energy, and it's almost unavoidable, this is independently of the technology use, although depending on the technology use, you can play it. But I guess the main idea here is that all these networks were deployed in one day. We did one day survey with a few grad students, we decided where we're going to distribute it, all the poles and all that, and then grad students, undergrad students, with no previous experience, one of the first day of class, we gave them a sheet with all the instructions on how to do, how to configure the thing. Obviously, we worked out all the wrinkles beforehand, so we have all the system already set up, and they deploy. And I think this is very useful, because if undergrads have been on a computer science school can do that, I think the military probably can do a much better job, I would expect, or not. Move to the next slide, please. So, you see on the right-hand side, on your left-hand side, you know, a picture of the area. You see right there, there's a flood, there's a lot of debris, and we start putting the poles over there. Obviously, this is certainly not the same conditions that you probably find in the Orleans, but it's probably relatively similar, and it's equal to some of the others. Essentially, the hardware is called, this is a common term, it's commercial off-the-shelf technology, very cheap. Each node would probably could be built with $1,000, maybe even less. If you go and buy everything, and you don't care about cost, and they care about the enclosures and all that, you probably can deal with one with less than $2,000. And that particular system would probably support, you know, water, and would probably support conditions that are right there in Orleans. You have directional antennas, an ITAC target, standard PDA PC, 8011 guards. You give an amplifier with antenna, which essentially allows you to go five kilometers or more, and the battery, cable, pole, et cetera. The software is all worked out, we have a standard Linux open source, we maintain with patches, et cetera, for some of the drivers' flood. We're using routing technology that was developed at MIT, the routing technology, it's essentially an 8011 mesh network that was developed for the campus, and we're using that. And this is integrated with different sensors, we have integrated with light, temperature, humidity, et cetera, and we can add now cameras, anemometers, wind speed, and pressure, et cetera. If you move to the next slide, please. So, this particular setup is very flexible and allows for customization. So, I talked a little bit about our testing deployment in Pond, which is what you see on top. It's an irregular grid, around 20 nodes in an area of 25 by 20 miles, mesh networking, and if it was only a deployment in one day, we set up everything in one day, we put it down in one day. Essentially, we use that to give undergrads experience on how to deploy their system, but we wanted also to test our experiment for our large-scale deployment. So we essentially, you know, here, you know, two birds with one stone. And the real deployment, the big deployment, was in Mexico. This is a seismic application over a line of 350 miles with 50 nodes. You see the, some of the devices that are used in there, there is a logger or recorder for seismic application, that is, you have the orange box that is at the bottom in the center, in the central figure. And you see a much larger antenna, because the distances between the nodes is probably much larger, it can be 10 kilometers, sometimes even more. And we use even different routing technology, because this is, if you're in computer science, route data on the line is the worst case scenario. It's almost a theoretical example, and especially what we're able to do is, we have to route data, and the worst case is theoretical scenario, so we have a different routing technology for this. This is a little bit more involved, because it also involves, you know, very precise sputtering, this is for a seismic application, I don't think this is actually required. And I think technologies that we use for the one-day testing, that could last even 15 days or so, could probably be very easily deployed in a catastrophe like would happen. And what happened is that you would probably, you have a global link, each individual link is 11 megabits a day, it's a standard rate of data. And so, you can probably even feed video, not very good quality video, but at least video. So, with a bunch of 25 grad students, you can probably have, you know, many relays of those, you can probably have the satellite, and probably very well communicated, and then extend that and deploy sensors, and you can gather sensory data in real time, so the scientists can analyze, maybe, you know, water flow, water levels, even level of air, et cetera, et cetera, and you have enough bandwidth to transport all this data, so you don't have to do any network processing, not do anything. If you want, go to the next slide, please. So, what are the communication with the challenges over there? These things are quite dynamic, so even though the nodes are static, you have these links that are over time going up and down, and this is because the environment is very dynamic. Even if you not move the nodes, links are quite unpredictable, and essentially do a lot of research with that. When you route and transport information from one point to the other one, what are the right routing methods? In internet, there has been a lot of development, but if you in internet, you have, you know, fiber optics, it's of very high quality, the beat rate is extremely low, and in this particular type of networks, they are very lofty, and links are very lofty, and everything that has been developed in the internet context probably does not directly apply to here. And obviously, you need specialized routing algorithms that are very particular to the type of topology that we live in. One of the most problematic issues is antenna alignment. And the way we do it now is essentially weight radius, ratchet, talking to each other, you know, and if we align a antenna to a particular place, and say, okay, we have relatively good table length, and we move to the next node. But this is manual configuration, and this is probably the only link in the system which is not fully configured. And I know that people from Urbana-Champaign are working and have some initial result with specialized hardware, they can do the alignment automatically. So you deploy, and the entire system self-configures. But it's still, you know, we have some things to do. I mean, it's not, I don't think it's ready to be done right now, but probably in the near future. If we move to the next slide, please. So, from the sensing point of view, we have to work here with integration of more specific sensors, or even more capable sensors. For rapid deployment numbers, we can afford them, even the power-hungry sensors, like, you know, the ones that even analyze a percentage of nitrogen in soil or something like that, even if they are more power-hungry, that the simple temperature sensors, et cetera, we can afford them, because the idea is that we do a fast deployment, and you know, the turnout of the data is fast, if you do one in 15 days, and then we essentially, and don't care anymore about the network. Then if we want to extend that, and we want, no, we don't want for 15 days solely, we want to extend for more time, let's say 30 days or a year or something like that, then it's this trade-off. You cannot do that, and therefore you have to start with like in-network processing, you do not transmit all the data, you reprocess it locally before you transmit it, et cetera. And we can use, and leverage some previous experiences, in particular integration with very low-power cameras, cyclas, it's something that has been developed. These are very similar to the cameras that you use in your cell phone, they have a resolution in the order of 128 bytes by 128 bytes. It's probably not very nice, but it's amazing the amount of things that you can add to this test, in particular even temporarily, how things change over time, et cetera, and we want to leverage that. And also, there is a big water pump, a seaming project, that is a joint effort between UC and UCLA and SENS.
Alberto, I think that maybe we don't want to get into the details of the technology, I'd like to be sure to have, so if you could skip along a little bit to, and keep the focus on, that'd be good. So, if we can, maybe we can speed it up a little bit?
The video's on. So, now can I introduce Sean, who's going to be talking about, you know, remote sensing of data. Okay, so next slide, please.
Yep, it's on.
Okay, so again, I'm Sean Newsom, I'm a faculty at UC Merced in computer science and engineering. My background is in image processing and computer vision, so this is a technology solution that might not necessarily be applicable to the current situation in New Orleans, although it might help, still estimating the damage, but certainly would be applicable in future hurricanes, or perhaps here in California for earthquakes. The premise here is that high-resolution satellite imagery is readily available, and I have to ask the question, how can we exploit this readily-available imagery to provide timely, remote damage effects, and timely, to obviously, to get resources out to help people as soon as we can, and remote, because we know that there was very little communication from the ground after the disaster? And this can be an unsupervised, where a lot of this processing or is done automatically, but it can also just be a semi-supervised system to help analysts focus their resources. Next slide, please. So here, I just grabbed off the internet a couple of satellite images, this turns out to be of Biloxi, Mississippi. These are from a company called Space Imaging. One taken quite a few years before November 2001, and then one taken on September 2nd. So, you know, you start looking at these images, one idea, you can get an idea by comparing the differences, what is the extent and location of the damages. We're going to focus then on the lower portion of these images. Next slide, please. So here, this is consumed in portions of the, of the two images, the before and after, and you know, you can start mentally playing the game of, look, comparing the two images to try and see where, what has changed, and then infer where the damage is. So next slide, please. So, I'm from, I did my doctoral work at UC S P, and I have some colleagues back there that have done some cutting-edge research on the problem of image registration, given two images that overlap spatially, how can you register it at the pixel level? And one application of that technology here is take these two temporally-based images and try to match them up as best possible. The challenge here is, of course, is that they are different, so you're not, you can't do an exact match, and there's some other problems where they might be different, even deposit different resolutions in the image themselves. But what I'm showing here is a flying image registration, the pixel level technology to these two images, and you'll notice the blue and the yellow regions. The blue regions indicate things that were there before the hurricane came, that had disappeared, and yellow are things that were not there before and appeared. So a quick way to establish the differences temporally between these two locations. These images are geocoded, so they do, you know, you could try to think about doing a problem just using the geocoding information from the satellite, but it's not clear that that would give you pixel-level accuracy that you need to be able to do the change detection. Next slide. So, you know, what were the initial research challenges for this solution? First, how would you accommodate for normal temporal differences, things like shadows and buildings that might be different from one image to another, which we know really is not, you know, should not be inferred that's damaged, things like tide, seasonal variation? And then from a more of an image processing, also from an image processing, computer vision viewpoint, what kinds of image features, this is an area that I'm interested in, what types of things can we automatically extract from these different images that would allow us to do change, accurate change protection, and hopefully damage analysis? Next slide. My last slide here, and I'm also using the image, keeping it completely within the image processing, computer vision domain is a tough problem. So, I'm interested in how to integrate the images, in this case, the different images, with possibly other sources of data that are recently becoming available, in particular geocoded data. Say if you had GeoReference 911 calls, how could that help you better to infer damage in combination with what you can get from the images, since the image processing problem is very difficult to solve by itself? Sensor networks, like what Alberto just talked about previously, could help either with monitoring environmental variables, or perhaps ground-level imagery? If you had no knowledge of the state of public utilities, where there was electric power, where there wasn't electric power, that could help you, they give you another piece of data, another data point of where the damage might be, and try again to combine that with the image data. GPS track, if you had vehicles with GPS sensors, you could at least get an idea of perhaps which streets were still navigable, and again, combine that with the image data to try to have a better picture of where the damage is. So that's all I have today.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name is Niksitara, and with Shankar, we're responsible for calling this meeting. I'd like to open up the forum, if anybody else in the audience here has comments to make, I'd certainly welcome it. Otherwise, I have some thoughts, Bob's beer, if you would be kind enough. We haven't heard much about public health, and I talked to Bob yesterday and asked him to maybe think a little bit about what some of the issues that go beyond engineering and policy.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of quick comments in two quite different roles. First, by, just by luck of the draw, I happen to be the chair of something called the Disaster Planning Working Group of the Academic Senate. And the Disaster Planning Working Group has, as all Senate committees, two roles. One of them is to comment on things that the administration, the campus is doing from our, the academic perspective, and the second one is to try and push them to do things that we think they should be doing, but they're not. And echoing the previous comment about opportunity, unfortunately, these situations do engender opportunity, and of course, we're going to be thinking immediately how, here on this campus, we can take the next move to enhancing our ability to respond to the eventual seismic disaster, given the impetus and the sensitivity that this whole thing brings to our community. And so hopefully you'll be hearing more from us on that. But one of the things I can tell you that I see from New Orleans, and I think, I'm sure Professor B would second, is that this really shows that in the first few days after a disaster, how much we are dependent on ourselves. And I think the very first thing the faculty has to learn is, in the preservation of your research materials, there ain't nothing people can do in the short term to help you that you haven't done to help yourself. And that's going to, I think, certainly be an early part of our move here, to try and sensitize our colleagues to that issue. Particularly because one of the first things that will happen is, these buildings will all be shut down until they can be seismically checked out, and checked out for other health and safety things. And there will be those amongst you, probably sitting in this room, who think you know more about it than those people do, and are going to say, get out of my way, I have my research material's in here, I'm going to go in and get it. But you're not going to be able to do that, flatly, you're not going to be able to do it. There were people in a previous, I think, I've heard anecdotally about situation in, somewhere in Texas, I think it was, where buildings flooded, and faculty members put on scuba gear and went in themselves underwater, trying to get their own stuff. Well, that is just not on, but in any case, no doubt someone will try. So that's one issue. The other issue, I'll just very briefly say, as in my role as a public health professor, another kind of natural disaster of a very different sort, but one which fits very much into our thinking here, is the epidemic issue. The influenza epidemic, which is surely coming, will be just as devastating in its own way as some of these events, but will affect infrastructure in quite a different way. It will affect the infrastructure by wiping out the people who operate the infrastructure. And so we have to think of those things too, a different dimension, a different kind of problem, but one indeed, here even in engineering, there are really big contributions to be made from an analytical sort of perspective, about taking what data we have, about the geographical and temporal distribution of influenza cases, predicting the spread of the disease, and so forth and so on, as a way to inform response and prevention efforts. So, there are, as we all know, many different dimensions to these things, which we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other comments? I'd like to, you have heard comments about potential initiatives. I think those of you who may not be as hooked up with NSF as some of us are, the National Science Foundation announced a million-plus dollars in available funding for what they call small grants for exploratory research, which is aimed towards allowing researchers with desire and need and experience to go and look at the types of damage in their respective fields, to get firsthand experience in what these things look like, so they can later on develop research plans and research opportunities that are aimed at, as we heard, there is the issue of recovery, the emergency response operations are going on. Some of us have expertise in those, and probably have been already asked to provide that, but then there is the recovery effort, and then of course, is the lessons that can be learned for all of us who are here, who have to deal with other issues eventually, and as Professor Meili stated, we have natural hazards of other types that we have to worry about. The, up to now, last few years, there is tremendous emphasis on the anthropogenic hazards that we deal with, but there are natural hazards that we have to deal with, and of course, we tend to, we have, we always have the opportunity to decrease the nature of the hazard, or increase the nature of the hazard by what we do. And that's where, that's where we all are. So, if you, the initiatives that were sort of mentioned by Professor B, I just want to remind you, those are NSF RFPs that are out there, and I urge those of you who are interested in this area to take advantage of that funding. The other aspect of what we want to do is, of course, look at how we can assist The other aspect of what we want to do is, of course, look at how we can assist in the recovery process. And I have a slide here which I'd like to show, because it really goes to what we, what we might want to do. And there will be many suggestions as to how to go for it. So this is just a kind of a placeholder, you know, something akin to Center for Study of Catastrophic Events. It's not a natural hazard, it's the event itself, which is a combination, as Professor Roberts said, it's a combination of the natural hazard, the way we engineered the system, and the way the system, the human system responded to the event, that create, to the hazard, that creates what we then have, the result. And of course, hurricane, hurricanes are going to be big on this, but we locally have an issue of earthquakes, and those generate tsunamis. So tsunami is another issue that we were painfully reminded is a possibility. And finally, in California, we should not forget, particularly in Bay Area, wildland, urban interface, fire storms are a major, major threat to us when we look at natural hazards. There are others, there are big storms, landslides, so on. Then there are what I refer to as anthropogenic hazards. Pandemic was already mentioned, has to be considered, and in that context, you have the WMDs, either terrorist or accidental release of one of these, one of these weapons, which can lead to obviously a major catastrophe. And to solve this, we will have to have multidisciplinary approaches. This is not something that can be solved by a single discipline. We all bring different expertise to this, and we will have to look at how we can best work together. So what we are looking at, and what we're going to try to do, is put together a roundtable, send invitations. Those of you who are interested, the simplest way to respond at this point is send email to either Professor Sastri or myself. My email is simply my last name, sitar, S-I-T-A-R, at CE.Berkeley.edu. Most of you already have seen the email from Professor Sastri, so you can respond to it. And we will try to organize a series of roundtable discussions where we look at how exactly we can proceed. Professor Meili mentioned going larger, looking at larger efforts. I think that's what we have to do. We have to look at what expertise we have on campus here, and then we have to look at what expertise we have with our contacts, with our colleagues at other institutions, and see if we can mount a, not just multidisciplinary effort, but a more of a major effort that involves number of major institutions, looking at this problem and looking at how we're going to proceed ahead. Yes, Professor?
Professor Sitar, how are we going to do what you just proposed? Well, nice to say, but how are we going to move forward, starting at 2:00 today to do this?
Okay, as I, as I said, we will call a series of meetings to proceed. There is, there is funding for initial research, for field research available from National Science Foundation, for those of us and those of you who are interested in doing it. There are opportunities to work directly through campus administration with the California Congressional delegation. Those channels are wide open, and most of, most of the people in this room actually know how to use those channels. The campus administration through Citrus, Professor Sastri, has provided opportunity for some seed funding for some of this. There are opportunities, maybe Shankar can address this a little better.
So actually, I'd love to hear from the audience. I think one of the things that we have to do is to answer your question.
Oh, sorry, microphone. I, I think that, I'd like to see, I'll sort of step up to the plate and to find the right coalition, as you correctly pointed out. I mean, there's a set of things that Nick has put up, certainly a good starting point. I'd add sort of command and control. You know, this question about, in the military, you know, they say battlefield is a very chaotic place, and so they spend a lot of time thinking about how you set up a command and control. So you ask yourself, why can't you have the same military command and control? But you cannot, because of a different arena, there's many different stakeholders. So I think that that does be an additional event I throw onto it. So I think we're going to organize ourselves to think big, and to organize ourselves to understand who our partners can be. The folks in this room have worked with folks in Tulane, Texas A&amp;M, UT, all kinds of other partner UC campuses and Citrus. So I think the first thing we need to do is to try to understand the correct coalition. Now, there's a seed group of faculty, I think you've heard from most of them here, who are interested in being the, sort of the champions of putting together a center. In Citrus, it's our job to encourage the establishment of such centers. So the seed funds needed to get going, even before NSF money rolls in. You know, that's my job, along with the administration, and Paul and the Chancellor's office is also willing to help. So there's help to get rolling. I think concretely, this group is planning to have, I think, weekly or biweekly meetings of some kind, in a smaller conference room, where they'll flesh out the agenda of the center, hopefully between, hopefully in the course of the next month, maybe a little more than that. And I think then the issue is of finding the right folks to actually support it. It could be the National Science Foundation, it could be the Department of Homeland Security, it could be someplace else. And I think all of that, I think that there needs to be a parallel activity amongst ourselves, that we go identify, some subset of us goes and identifies people that will pay for this. But I hope that at the end of a couple of months, we have a white paper on, this is a group of universities, faculty, this is what we, this is what we can put together, and this is what we think it will need for, I would say, a three- to five-year effort at the outset, maybe, maybe longer, but maybe in, yeah. You have a microphone. Good.
Yeah. Rachel, engineering news. I just, I have a question. Is there, is there some kind of call to action for engineering students in particular who want to get involved this semester versus three to five years down the line? How can they get involved?
So there's going to be two parts of this agenda. This same group is going to have a weekly seminar series as well, and part of that activity will be to actually, you know, part of it is an operational agenda, and Bob and Mary and Carleen all have a well-plugged into current efforts. There has been talk of flying students out there to start doing work, and all of that will happen now. While that's happening, I think in parallel, there'll be a planning activity for how to take lessons learnt from operations today to put together a center. So there'll absolutely be activities for the, is that, am I speaking to Bob and Mary? They already have a list of things that, do you like?
You really struck home.
Yeah, Mike, Mike.
There's a tremendous resource here in the form of these students. I couldn't have been here today had it not been for the students, quite frankly. They were sending me things last night at 1:00. I guess it's this morning. There's a tremendous capability, Kofi and Kavi sitting back there, Bruce Dorson. This is the army that sits behind us. Rachel, thank you. I was making contacts with the Student American Society of Civil Engineers, with the Student Society of Mechanical Engineers. We've got a tremendous capability buried in these so-called students. I call them teachers.
I would also add, for the engineering students, I teach a class called Seismic Design and Construction for Architects, but I sent out an announcement to the students in my college, and I would certainly open this to some engineering students. If they would like to participate in that, I would open it up to looking to what we could learn from this and what can be done. And so I would be happy to use that seminar, which meets on a Tuesday morning at 9:00 a.m. And if students are interested, they can find me or find my email, and I will be happy to have them participate in that.
Okay, we have, we have people online at University of California, Santa Cruz. We haven't heard from them. Is there anybody at UCSC who would like to say anything or add to what they heard?
This is Brad Smith. We're actually still surveying the faculty that are involved in Citrus around here. There's a number of folks in sensor networks, wireless networks. There's also sort of network survivability, and some of the discussions that have been going on around here are related to things like all these domains that are based out of the New Orleans, Louisiana area, and needing to be shifted other places, and sort of more logistical kind of issues about how to bring these domains up with web servers and mail servers and all that kind of stuff. But we have not progressed too far in thinking of concrete plans.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from UC Merced?
No, we're very excited about participating. We'd like to bring some of our social sciences into the discussion as well. I'd like to see it not only have the broader discussion, but as soon as possible, folks, some working groups, looking at more of the specific technologies that we talked about and that we can work with the other campuses on. So that you have a working groups, perhaps even offline working groups, writing proposals that are important, we're very excited.
That, thank you very much. That's an excellent suggestion. Is there any additional input from, from the audience here before we, before we close this meeting? Yes, Professor Bray?
I want to echo what Professor Meili just said. I think we have some very good focused things. They're very broad areas, levees, offshore, the organizational aspect, but I'm still concerned about how we specifically move forward in this broader picture. There's a bigger issue here, and they have important implications and lessons to be learned in terms of how we respond to ardent natural disasters, earthquakes, and I'm not comfortable on how that's going forward. So maybe we could discuss that if other people feel that that's an important issue.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. I'm not comfortable with that either, how we're going to go forward. There is a lot of issues, you know, we're, our classes are in session, most of us are busy teaching classes, we have, we have our research interests, but, but the thing is that we will have to focus on this. I think the suggestion from Merced, forming working groups, is an excellent, excellent suggestion, and so I think what we'll do is, we'll proceed with forming working groups and a general forum where we can move ahead and, and think about it. This is, as you know, you have, the issue here is funding, there is seed funding, as Professor Sastri announced from campus, but ultimately, we will have to find sponsors elsewhere, or we'll have to do it ourselves. And forming and organizing these ideas in a way that we can find sponsors for this, for this work, and partners for this work, is really what is going to, what will have to take place.
But I think doing something in an organized, coordinated way now, hitting the politicians now with the balls rolling, is critical. And if we have meetings and workshops, and we have a better solution two months from now, that won't be as good as a bad solution or an average solution implemented today.
I, I'd like to echo that. Bob and I were just talking, I'd like to see us meet twice, meet twice weekly, not biweekly. I think I would divide by two, not multiply by two, and I'd like to set ourselves a two-and-a-half to three-week target to have a white paper out, in a sense of where we want to go. It can be refined later, but the key to groups like NSF is to get something to them quickly, so they can comment and iterate with you, and give us a sense of where they're at and what they see the needs are. I think we need to make a lot of contacts, that's already happening. John asked about quick response and so on, we do have several focused areas. We're trying essentially to send a levy team down to take West Coast levy experts that have to do the emergency levy response and fixing down, and learn what the issues were and what some of the implanted solutions were done there. This is the first time we fix levees at this pace with military assets, so there are a lot of lessons to be learned for California's catastrophe. We've long speculated what we could do with Black Hawk helicopters, but our holes are also a lot bigger, it's not obvious we would be as effective. And so we need to learn a lot of things from these people. We're collaborating with local district engineers and the Corps and other people down there and other experts, and we'll be taking some students along with us, because as Professor B points out, we have to take people smarter than us so that we can learn from them. So these kinds of things are happening. Similar ventures are being put forward right now in the offshore arena and also in the coastal and onshore stuff.
I think you're right, John. The ocean is so big and my boat is so small, and the way I'm looking at it is, we've got a rapid response, just as they have a rapid response in New Orleans. And at this point, it's what I call the rescue operation. In essence, we're trying to basically mobilize our forces to be able to respond rapidly to the unfolding events. And unfortunately, or fortunately, they're not only focused on Katrina, things are unfolding here rapidly. I wish they would kind of come in then, but opportunities don't work that way. So then the next layer is, once we have been able to get our pins together in that context, we want to stabilize the system. And that's a little bit longer timeframe, and there's where we can begin to reach more deeply into the public, we're already reaching them, to reach into the government, to reach into the people that are going to finance us in the long term. And then I think there's yet a third layer, which you might call building. And this is going to be a progressive evolutionary enterprise. I do not see how you can pre-plan all of this. We're experimenting our way through something I don't think this campus, to my knowledge, has ever done.
Okay, thank you. Well, obviously, there is a lot that needs to be done, and in the end, the way Shankar put it, you know, we don't have the command and control of a military. In the end, it's faculty initiatives, that's the way University of California works. So we will be counting on a lot of you providing the input and providing the energy and doing it. What the administration can do is, is make it easier to do these things, and the administration is committed to making it as easy as possible for people to put in the energy. So I think that's, that's really what we're looking at, and whether it's one global effort that is the appropriate way to respond, or whether it's individual efforts or smaller teams going after smaller pieces of the pie, I suspect that the answer is all of the above. There are things that lend themselves to individual faculty efforts, there are things that lend themselves to small, small teams, and there are things that lend themselves to large initiatives. And I think we should be able to pursue all of this, and that's basically called multitasking. And we'll, I think that's, that's the way to answer it, because people will have different, different ideas, but not losing the sight of the bigger, big picture and the issue that, you know, there are congressional opportunities for congressional action on this that allows this work to be done more easily or with better funding. I think those kinds of things should be kept in mind, and I think we have sufficient coordination in that area to be able to be fairly effective. So thank you very much for participating, and I'm looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you.